All right, August 4th, 2014 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Do I have motion to approve?
Mayor, we can't approve those minutes. We don't have enough.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll get them next time. First thing on the agenda tonight, we have point on the agenda is a proposed sign is for the hot topic toward at 8:00 to 10:00 Mastoni Commons. Do we have someone here representing them? Well, it's up to the commission. All right, and you have a card.
Jim Reel, please.
Okay. Brian, you had some comments on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report dated October 11th. This is a new sign request of three foot by approximately 20 foot or 59.5 square foot wall sign on the tenant space in Mastoni Commons. That's unit 25. That space was recently created next to Alta Beauty, and it was part of the previous Champ Sporting Goods unit. The proposed sign will contain block style lettering, and it'll have white faces with the side returns painted black satin. My review is based on a sign illustrated dated August 29th, 2014. Based on that review, I'm looking at the sign for compliance with the approved signage criteria for Mastoni Commons, and those criteria were recently updated by the Planning Commission at the developer or complex owner's request. I found that the sign substantially complies with the requirements with a few minor exceptions. The side returns are proposed as black satin and bronze are required, and the raceway color must match the fascia. So in order for the proposal to move forward, the applicant will either need to revise the request to reflect compliance with the criteria or seek a variance from the board zoning appeals. But I add the caveat that really the modifications are very minor in nature and should be easily addressed by the applicant. I also did note that the applicant is proposing an under canopy sign which is permissible in the commons. However, that sign does not appear to match the under canopy signage that the Planning Commission recently worked with the plaza owner to approve. So that should be confirmed by the applicant in working with the developer diversified to match what's approved for the entire development.
Brian, I think the under canopy, you're talking, I think it's actually sticking out the front.
Yeah.
Kind of like Alta wanted to do.
Oh, is it? Is that sign, that's sign B?
I think, is that right?
Yeah. It's actually projecting out right there.
So in such case, that's not permissible in the commons.
Okay.
And apologize, I thought that was the under canopy sign that was being requested. Just by looking at the sign deal detail on the final sheet, I didn't catch it on the site plan that shows sign B.
Well, that was a good comment. Do we have any others? Brian? Questions?
I don't think we have any other comments.
I do have a question.
Sure.
On the, the under canopy sign, there's, under canopy signs are not allowed, or there's a certain requirement?
They're allowed, and the developer's diversified has a standard in which all tenants, all tenants have to follow.
They may be doing them all themselves. I kind of have a feeling, they're all single. That says developer diversified has their logo, and it's just generic font, says the store name.
Okay.
And they were going to go through and do all of the rules under every store.
All right, so we have a plan with the modification that it will not have that sign on it, and we're all right with a sign that would be developer diversified approved as under the canopy sign.
Okay, I made a note back here.
Okay, are you all right with that?
Yes.
Because I think that you're going to have any other sign other than the one that's on the front of the store.
Okay.
Make it, no, you don't need a variance, as long as you have two, make it like developers diversified, and contact them.
Okay. And bronze returns. Okay, and then the raceway returns must match, or the raceway must match the fascia. Right. And the returns of the letters have to be bronze. Yep, yeah. Okay, I made a note back here.
So those two conditions, you're all right with that?
Well, if, I'm not the final decision maker, we're installing, but I'm sure that we will.
Will not have approval with those conditions?
Yes.
So you'll have to come back if.
Okay, we'll, we'll have approval with those conditions.
Okay, approval with the conditions. Do I have a motion?
There's a question.
Yes.
This is, this is just, it's supposed to be the background, there's not really a background behind the sign.
No, they're actually, they're actually three stained letters.
Okay, okay. Is the big motion approved with the side returns of the bronze comments and without the blade sign?
Second that. Approval in the second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, next we have proposed two wall signs for the first watch at Mastoni Marketplace. That's you two?
Yes.
All right. All right, comments from our plan, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report for this request is a little more lengthy, and this gets back to some of our discussions previously about approving an overall signage package for this particular development. My report dated October 12th, 2014 for first watch in Mastoni Marketplace. The applicant's proposing two new wall signs for their tenant space located at 463 East Aurora Road. This space happens to be a corner unit and is permitted two signs, but the total area of both signs is limited to their frontage. Both signs are proposed to be on the same, are proposed to be the same size, which is 2.85 x 14.16 or 40.41 square feet, with one sign facing Route 82 and the other facing Route 8. I have a comment here that the illustration depicts the square footage associated with the Route 82 sign as 40.5, and the sign facing Route 8 as 28.2. The allowable sign area is listed as 80 square feet for Route 82 and 160 square feet for Route 8. My concern, again, as I've stated in other reports for this development, is proposal for this signage may not correspond with other unapproved requests for the plaza. In addition to the wall signs, a tenant panel insert for ground monument signs being proposed, and I noted here, to my knowledge, a ground monument sign has not been approved for this property, nor is an overall sign package. The property is zone B1 Convenience Business. I reviewed the sign illustration and a site plan dated December 11th, 2013. Section 1179.03 F2 of the Mastoni Planning Zoning Code permits two square feet of identification signage for each lineal foot of building frontage. Since the subject property is a corner lot, section 117907 F1 states that the maximum allowable area for identification signage may be increased for an additional frontage. The increase for the additional frontage shall be equal to 40% of the allowable sign area if the additional frontage were considered the principal frontage. However, no sign area on a bonus frontage shall exceed one square foot per lineal foot of frontage, or in any case, exceed 75 square feet. Using Route 82 as the primary frontage, which is approximately 260.79 lineal feet, and Fairlane Drive as a secondary frontage, which is 80 lineal feet, the subject property, not this particular unit, but the property, is permitted to have 585.58 square feet of sign area. Since the end of 2013, I reviewed two requests for signage for this development, Vitamin Shop and Mattress Firm. At that time, Vitamin Shop was proposing 156.8 square feet of signage, which left 429.5 square feet of identification signage for the remaining six tenant spaces. Mattress Firm was proposing 90 square feet, which then leaves 339.5 square feet for the remaining five tenants. Now subtracting the proposed 80.2 square feet from the remaining 339.5, the last four tenants will be allotted 259.4 square feet. On average, this represents 64.8 square feet per remaining unit. For the smaller tenant spaces, the ones with 20-foot frontages, this is more than what they would normally be permitted. For larger spaces, I put here First Watch, Sherwin-Williams, and Aspen Dental will receive reduced area under this scenario. For this reason, I recommend that the owner of the retail plaza prepare a comprehensive sign package for the Planning Commission to approve, and I note the code section that that's, that's applicable to that request. In June of this year, I do just want to point out that the owner did submit an overall signage package, and First Watch was depicted as needing 98.5 square feet. That may or may not have been known by the owner at the time, the exact area that First Watch needs. The June submittal of the overall signage plan was an internal rough draft, to my knowledge, and did not receive Planning Commission approval. The sign panel insert, I don't necessarily have concerns with that, but I don't know if the size of the tenant panel is appropriate, because I don't believe that the ground monument sign's been approved. So based on this, I believe that the request should be tabled until the commission has a complete understanding of the signage needs for the entire retail plaza, taking into account section 1179.13 G2 of the code, which allows for a comprehensive signage package. The most important aspect of this, of the signage for this plaza is to remain at or below 585.58.
Basically, as far as this sign goes, there hasn't been a plan submitted by the owner of the building to approve this, the whole thing.
That's my understanding.
As a result, we can't actually get our individual panel approved. And then these, the building signs, I'm not totally sure, but.
You say individually, they're okay. These are the two, or is that, or does, you know, it could be allowed, but you might be eaten up more than what they really should be, and there's going to be nothing left for ten, three, four, or five.
Right, and it's up to the, the code states, it's up to the building owner to allocate the square footage per unit, and the review that I did back in June, the internal review, did show First Watch is needing like 90-some square feet, which is a little more than what's being requested this evening. So the amount I'm least concerned about, but we just, I don't, I don't believe we have a real comprehensive view of what's being requested for the entire development, which typically the commission encourages that approach as opposed to individual signs coming in, not having, you know, the bigger picture in mind. So that's why I suggested that that approach be utilized.
Well, is there a certain number of square foot allowed per senior foot of storefront?
It's two, two square feet of, per tenant frontage.
Okay, so the whole plaza should have two square foot for, so each person should be allowed so much, correct?
Correct, and I think what you're requesting is fine in terms of what the space is allowed. But what the commission doesn't know is if that's what the property owner is going to allow for that space, because they can allocate, per the code, they allocate how much is allowed per unit.
Okay.
It's really easy if you come in with the plan, all right, and this is how much it's going to be, so the new tenants coming in will know this is all on the get person.
I see, I see, and the landlord didn't make that clear, or the property owner? Or he probably doesn't have that in the lease or whatever.
Right, right now, we don't have, actually, we receive more than one version already.
I see, I see.
We'd like to have one version done, and then from there, you just allocate to different places.
Okay, so basically, we need to get touch with the property owner.
Yes.
And talk to him.
Yeah, bring it back with the overall sign, this is what it's going to be, this is what it's going to look like, this is what they're going to be section off as, no matter who comes in, no matter what happens, you've got your basic layout, and then that's what we're going to stick to all the way through.
Okay, I understand. Okay, and get back. So we're going to pay what, and then you're going to tell what, and then I'll get that information and submit it?
That, yeah, that's entirely up to the commission.
Okay.
I think that would be the.
Yeah, and I have, we asked him for that previously, the first one, I think, that was Vitamin Shop, and it's, it's the same comments you had back then, so I don't know if he's ignoring it or.
Okay, I mean, if he doesn't have a page in the, in the lease like this, then he probably needs to make one.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
I understand.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
All right, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, Jim.
Okay, great.
Bring us that back.
I appreciate it, thanks very much.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, proposed signage for Hurtschek's Tire. Like, you want to come down, please? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report October 13th, 2014, and this is an additional wall sign for 854 East Aurora. The applicant's proposing an additional three by 10 or 30 square feet wall sign on their tenant space located at 854 East Aurora Road, the corner of East Aurora and Valley View. The property is zone B1 Convenience Business District. I reviewed the sign for compliance with section 117903 F2 of the Mastoni Planning Zoning Code, which permits two square feet of identification for each lineal foot of building frontage. The applicant's building frontage is approximately 717, I'm sorry, 117 feet facing Route 82 and approximately 32 feet facing Valley View. Based on these approximate frontages, the code provides the site with more than 230 square feet of identification signage. Additional areas permitted since the site has frontage on two roads. Therefore, the additional sign is proposed more than complies with the area limitations of the code. Moreover, because the site is a corner lot with frontage on two roadways, the building has multiple signed frontages, allowing more signs to be located on the building face. The only thing that I'd note on this request, that after looking into the code further, there is a section in the code that speaks to the number of signs permissible per building face, and it's section 117903 F3, and it states that except for signs in windows or on doors, there shall be no more than one identification sign on each building face entitled to have identification. So what I think needs to be clarified is, is this sign that's being proposed, the tire sign, is it on a different building face than the Hurtschek's Auto Service sign? And if it is, then it would be permissible by the code. If it's not a different building face, then the applicant would need to seek a variance from the board of zoning appeals.
Of course. You see by the picture.
Yeah.
What? I mean, has it, has it code changed in the last five or six years? Because not that long ago, I had four signs on the front of my building that was all approved.
Well, it probably has, because we did have a zoning, or a sign zoning change. We changed all the signs. However, to me, this is almost like a logo.
It's just brand identification.
It's brand identification more than it's, anything else going to be looked at that way.
Well, how about if I just join two signs together, and it's one sign?
And that's what I was going to suggest, if you join them two together, it's one sign, and it's perfectly acceptable.
Not a problem.
All right, with that condition, do I have motion?
Take a motion approved.
I have motion in second, you're going to put them together, and we'll be fine. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Have a nice evening, and you might.
I sure will. Would you hand this back to that owner that, that there is only one sign per face?
Mike just stopped up for approval tomorrow.
Not a problem.
Thanks.
We're good?
Good.
Thank you, sir. All right. Well, once it was a pleasure.
All right, moving on to proposed signage for Windville Golf Center. There he is. You know, we're missing one here. First one, we did pass harder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Memo dated October 11th, 2014, the applicant's proposing an additional three by five or 15 square foot wall sign on the Golf Center building located at 1511 East Aurora Road. I reviewed an application, including a hand drawn sign illustration dated September 30th, 2014. Section 117903 F2 of the Mastoni Planning Zoning Code permits two square feet of identification signage for each lineal foot of building frontage. The building frontage in this case appears to be about 85 feet on Route 82, which entitles the site to about 170 square feet of identification signage. However, there's a few unknowns with this request, the first being the total area of the existing wall signs, which were approved in March of this year, and then the proposed location of this sign on the building compared to what already exists. This gets into that same issue that we just discussed in the last request. If the applicant can demonstrate that the signage is at or below the permitted amount and provide the location of this sign on the building compared to the existing, then the request can most likely be approved subject to a final administrative review. Absent this confirmation by the applicant, the request should be tabled until the information can be supplied.
Sure. Spring, they approved two signs, the square footage of those signs is 36 feet square feet, and then the new sign, there's two other spots just like that.
I guess there's three on there.
There are.
Question?
Um.
So we have two things, two signs from companies, just from those companies, this is going to be their company, their company, basically.
Final material?
Was it going to be, was the sign itself made of?
It's the same as the other two, just, it's a vinyl type of sign.
Yeah, they're two arms.
Just a vinyl sign. Just put a picture of the company.
There's a picture of this too? Or is it just?
Just that, basically that, it's got the logo of the company.
It's got a fit in the three by five.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion?
I'm okay with it, I just made a comment in general. You may want to start requiring a little bit more detail than just this for a submittal. You know, it shows us where this is at on the building. Yeah, just require a little more, that's not, you're probably done unless you want to change one of these, but just for other things in the future, you have a little more issues.
Sure.
Totally agree.
But I'm okay with it.
Motion approved? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? You're all set? All right, take care, have a nice winter, hang in there. Next, we have proposed signage for AutoCorrect at 573 East Island.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report dated October 12th, the applicant's proposing to increase the sign area of an existing ground monument sign located at 573 East Island. The existing ground sign is depicted as being set back 12 feet from the road. The property is zone limited industrial, and I reviewed an application dated October 2nd, 2014 in connection with this request. Again, getting to the section 1179.07B of the code regarding ground signs, a 40-square foot ground sign is permissible. Unfortunately, the area of the existing ground sign is illustrated in the, the item provided with the application is unknown. In order for this proposal to move forward, the applicant must submit a rendering of the sign that provides the existing proposed dimensions, dimensions of the sign. If the area of the sign is at or below 40 square feet, then the, the sign will comply with the code. An additional unknown relative to this proposal is the type of materials being proposed and the craftsmanship of the sign. It appears the proposal is to possibly hand paint the sign on some type of material, perhaps wood. This should be confirmed by the applicant prior to approval of the request. Based on the outstanding items noted, I believe the proposal should be tabled until more information is provided and a dimensioned sign illustration submit for review.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
This is an existing sign, right?
The two posts, changing very normal, move back and right, are existing. Got back and forth, if you want, I can go, post this up, it'll work out well. As mentioned, I like, he told me that his intention was to remove that and replace it with a less structure for signage.
Good.
But of course, I've talked to Seid in the meantime, there's been more, I mean, phone call me, he's not proposing, I filed for that.
Comments? Is this your business? And you have nothing out there to blow your business with?
Your business card is on the basis of age.
But nothing in front?
It's all there.
Temporary signage or something, or C-ish or.
Wait, we could do temporary signage, it becomes, and if we, it doesn't have to be here.
I would rather you do that, so people know you're there, and then let's do it, right?
I'd like to do it properly. Again, I really don't know where to start.
Well, we're going to help.
Thank you.
And you'll start with temporary signage in front, that would get your business going. But we need you to follow up to make sure that this gets assigned, that it's put open sign. It's good for you, for your image, and it's also good for Mastoni.
Absolutely, right. The temporary signage, when I talked to, we didn't see Hall, she just said that the temporary sign permit was a fee, and it could go for 30 days, but then have it down for 90, after which I might pay again, and then have it up for 30, and down for 90. It's kind of counterproductive, not even whole work in that way.
Well, you know, I could see if you were selling something that you were going to sell for 30 days, and then you'll sell something else, but this is your bread and butter. Are there ever any changes remain, so that you can leave this up for this business until it gets gone?
30 days would give them enough time to kind of relax the commission.
Why don't we start with that, and start with 30 days, and try and do your best to make this come to a head? If you can, you come back and see this. We'll try and work with you, but you need to get something out for now, so people know you're there, and once you get that out, come back and get a house, so much.
Sure. That would be better, most of them.
So this right now, tonight, we need a motion to table.
Motion table.
Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor? All right. Opposed? All right, so.
Is the, is it building over, does he have any, like, is he, or anything, or is it just another business?
It's just, it's a long building with several units.
Yeah.
And all it does is rent.
You're a stake.
Not.
Yeah, it's kind of making it somebody.
Yeah. It's not his, but you're paying the rent, but you gotta get people in there to pay there. Can we notch him a little bit, Mike?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I believe I do. I don't remember the names, but I gave her this contact. Whatever.
We got it.
Okay.
All right, so you're on your way. You're gonna have some kind of signage up there. But let's make it right.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay? All right, so you're done for tonight. See them about temporary signage.
All right, just focus tomorrow or something.
Yeah, sure. Okay?
All right.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. All right, proposed signage for B.W. Rogers Menarick at 7900 Empire Parkway. There you are. All right, we have some comments from our planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October 11th, 2014 report. This is another alteration on an existing ground sign for 7900 Empire Parkway. They're gonna change a sign panel on this existing ground sign. The code allows a forty-square-foot ground monument side. Proposed panel replacements, two-by-ten or twenty square feet, which complies with the code. It's being placed in a block structure that already exists on the site. Therefore, at this time, I believe the request can be approved as submitted.
Any other questions? Comments? Pretty basic. All right, grab a motion. Have a motion approved. Motion. A second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Both? I wasn't so hard. Okay, next, we're looking at proposed outdoor storage shed for St. Tim.
Hi.
Evening.
Thank you. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My October 12th report, St. Timothy's Outdoor Storage Shed. Proposing to construct or place an eight-by-15 or one hundred and twenty-square-foot storage shed in the southeast corner of the existing parking lot located at 8667 Shepherd Road. Property zoned R1 Residence District. Based on a review of the code, my note that section 1163.02H of the code provides regulations related to accessory storage buildings in the R1 District. The proposed one hundred and twenty-square-foot storage building complies with the requirements in this section, but a couple minor unknowns, unknown items exist. The structure appears to be located in the rear yard, but the proposed setbacks are not identified. The code requires a ten-foot side and rear yard setback, and the proposed location most likely conforms to these requirements. I think it does, but just need to confirm that. The applicant should confirm that. And then finally, the maximum ground coverage for accessory structures is ten percent of the rear yard. Again, I believe this, this complies with the requirement, but should be confirmed by the applicant. If the applicant can demonstrate compliance with the code requirements, then I don't see any reason why the request can't be approved, subject to a final administrative review for compliance.
Questions? Comments?
If they added recently, the senator would be losing his spot. Does that change any requirements that they had to put right with the parking lot? It appears they're thinking of a spot, a couple parking spots.
Yeah, the site more than complies. They had extra parking. I went back to my old memo, and they have sufficient parking, so a loss of one space would be, would be fine.
Questions? Comments?
But it's still, still pretty much sealed up. You know, you've got visual, but there's trees on it. The real part of that parking lot was earth-mounded or land-banked, and so there's significant space on our property. I mean, you can sort of see on the thing I submitted that, I made it to the top of that mound at the south, and that's twenty-five feet, and it's more than, it's got to be at least forty, fifty feet back to the trees, the woods back there, and the woods, that's where the property line is back there. And I think that it's kind of five acres there, and I think you said about, it couldn't exceed more than ten percent. I mean, I think we're pretty safe on that, so.
I would concur, just.
What would I need to do then to get that to you?
Well, we're gonna have a conditional in whatever motion goes for, and then you'll have to follow those, or you will not be allowed. So if you're easily within that, you're probably fine.
Can you come in tomorrow for a sound improvement?
Yes. The slab is, or skid is, is going to be put in.
Correct. We were actually hoping to do it on the existing parking space, on existing parking space.
Okay, so there is a pavement on. Anything else? There is nothing. Go ahead, Mark.
We have a motion to approve it based on the conditional ideas that Brian had.
We have a motion to conditionally approve. Do I have a second? A motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Both? There you go. Great. All right, next is proposed landscape plan for the retail plaza of 463 East Aurora. How you doing, Terry?
Good.
How's everybody?
Good.
Good.
So first, we'd like to discuss the landscape plan. And then a couple items to get to commissions. Thoughts on one would be a monument sign that I'll hand out when you get done. And then in concert with the landscape plan, the site plan has changed from a drive-through on the west end to a patio on the west end, which you will see on the landscape plan. So in this area, right here.
Well, let's start off with Brian's comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report dated October 12th. This is a final landscape plan. This is for the new retail plaza under construction at Route 8 and Route 82. I have very few comments. This has been a work in the making. We've been working back and forth on the landscape plan, and I think the applicant's done a nice job on, I think, providing a nice plan for the community. Just a couple minor items pursuant to section 1172.02 of the Planning and Zoning Code, the site must maintain an appropriate mixture of deciduous and non-deciduous trees. To accomplish this, the applicant's proposing three concolor white firs. I believe the city arborist recommended this species of fir, but this should be confirmed. To accomplish achieving a balance between deciduous and non-deciduous trees, I believe additional concolor firs, approximately six, should be added to the tree lawn between the English oak. The addition of more fir trees to the tree lawn will further screen the parking lot from 82. My second comment, English oak are now proposed within the right-of-way tree lawn instead of Cleveland select pears. I believe this is acceptable, and I believe this is what the city arborist recommended, but we should just confirm that. The applicant has worked cooperatively with the building department to provide a quality landscape plan. The recommendation of additional concolor firs is minor, in my opinion, and will further enhance the site. At this time, I believe the plan can be approved, subject to a final administrative review by the city arborist.
Thank goodness she got rid of the pears. All right. Questions? Comments?
What do you think about the additional trees that are suggested? I don't mind adding some. I didn't want to put it in front of the shopping center. I just might have seen that sort of tree in front of the shopping center.
The one advantage you have is there's a fence there, right?
We argue that there's gonna be a decorative fence along the front.
The decorative fence screens the parking.
It will, yes.
So that's what they're trying to do, the trees, but we have separate fences for that position.
Right.
Questions? Comments?
Make motion approve, based on final administrative review.
Do I have a second? I guess clarification on your motion. Are you saying you're okay without adding additional trees or?
Yes, I'm okay with having without any additional trees. Because of the fence.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Both? All right, now, let's talk about that sign.
Well, the patio, I don't know how we want to address the patio and the change in site plan. I don't know if it can be done in conjunction with the approval of the landscape plan.
No. I think we're gonna need something separate on that, Brian.
Yeah, typically, any amendments to the plan would be a, go through an amended site plan process and review and approval here at the planning commission level.
So you put this first, the landscape, oh, if you can come back with that, but we could maybe do that in that monument sign all at one time, and then it'd be done.
Just for clarification on your patio, so is the, just, you know, talk about for a minute.
Yeah, sure.
This is, this is the patio area, and there's landscaping around, but this is, is gonna be a seating area?
It's gonna be a seating area for First Watch.
Okay. And this, are these shrubs? Is that what that is?
There's shrubs, and then there's bollards. Fire Department requested that we place bollards.
Okay.
And then we've done, and we basically have a shrub, a bollard, shrub, bollard.
Okay, that was gonna be my question, because one of you got additional ones.
Those are, the plans that were submitted by First Watch included the bollards for that seating for the lawn patio. Just to reiterate the importance of that, we had an incident Saturday morning. A car jumped a curb and hit a building.
Okay.
So.
Right through T-Mobile. It's unbelievable. I don't know how that happened. T-Mobile's right over there. We're many months' mentions.
Oh, okay.
Right in. Yes, we've incorporated the bollards. Good, so we're good for tonight. You know what you gotta do to bring it back? Just give us the, what your final monument sign's gonna look like, and then put that down on paper, which is separate, because it's changing the site.
Yeah. Comments? Here's the proposed monument sign. It's being designed to basically match the red brick that's on the storefront. And there's a red sign with a cornice on top. It's tamed. Basically, this all matches what we're doing in the storefront. Eight panels. We've located at the main entranceway and Route 2 in the shopping center.
Let's just take Bruce's.
It should, it should come.
Because we've gotta have it from you as to whether it complies.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Mayor, just to bring the applicant into the fold as to what we talked about earlier, about working with you to get a sort of a master sign palette or sign package for the whole development.
We're not gonna do that. I just can't, I can't, we have seven national tenants, and I'm in no position to tell them, you know, what signage they can, can't have. Obviously, the city can. We've had discussions with them, but they, they just want to go around us and deal directly with the municipality on that issue.
Well, the problem is you have X number of feet available.
Right.
Everybody wants to be the biggest one.
Right. There's concern that there may not be enough square foot left for.
Yeah, that's, that's where we're going, where we're coming from. I know you say you can't control it, but if you have approval of monument sign like this, I think it would, like this one has it all equally proportioned.
Right.
If you would have approval on something like that, that's gonna be hard to go around. But we don't want to lose you a tenant.
Tough, because we have different architectural elements across the whole storefront.
Yes, you could have them sized wise.
Sized, yeah. With everything. That's understood, and with our leases, our leases do not permit us to dictate the signage.
So, so what you gotta do is come in with the overall footage and the overall size of the ground sign. All right, how this divvied up here, that's gonna be between you and them.
Okay.
How's that set?
On the monument sign, that's fine. The storefront signage?
You could just go by the tenant space, and whatever your tenant space is, is what you get, but at the end, if it's at or above the 585 roughly that you're allowed total for the site, then your last one or two tenants are, it could, it may not be a problem, but it could be your last tenant or your last one or two tenants may not have enough area left, and they would have to come for variance. And in terms of the record for a variance, it'll most likely be introduced that this, this conversation's been had at the planning commission level, which typically wouldn't look favorably upon the applicant for variance in that case.
So if you're setting yourself up, the last two units may be very difficult to lease because of the fact they would have the proper.
Does the code address the, how's the code assign the square footage of the sign?
It's two, two square feet per lineal foot of tenant frontage.
Okay.
So that's something you want to remember.
Yeah. So that can be distributed any way across the front of the building, right?
Well, we have.
It can be.
Yeah, we have plans for the linear footage noted on it, so we could determine it that way.
I mean, you could just simply, I don't know if you're comfortable with this, but you could just tell them that they're required to follow the Planning and Zoning Code for their frontage based on their tenant space, and give them an example. If you have eighty feet of frontage, you get one hundred and sixty square feet, and that, that's it. And they're required to follow our code, and there's no exception. See, the tenant, the package is you have the ability to choose who gets what based on the larger units, but if you're not comfortable doing it, you can just follow our code, the city's code.
Now, you have control of all the fronts, all right? But just to try and take the heat off you when it comes time to negotiate, what would mess you up is if you had that rule for two square feet, all right, and then somebody else was bigger. Now you've set a precedent. So I would warn you, of course, you just don't do that. You come at what they're limited.
And you gotta monitor yourself what you got left, which is, they're starting to, you know, work your portion of your way out, and just.
I mean, it.
We're trying to help protect you from, you have any units, you know, obviously any units on that side, and then it just gets to.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it, it does.
And they're just wanna go around us to see what the municipality complies with.
Well, we, we got, you've got a planning commission meeting with the plan. That's why you're here, the plan. All right, if you have a plan, gets in place, and you stick to it for the first few ones, there won't be no problems, right?
There'll be a problem. So, that's aggressive.
Well, we don't wanna cause you problems, but on the other hand, if we don't have any control, then this place start looking like Las Vegas. But if you have slot machines, have them. So, any other comments?
No questions.
Agreed.
I guess, yeah, if you're paying for any comments on the sign, if, at first, I was thinking, geez, we should have brick around the sides. But, since I was looking at my phone, there's some other, other ones around town. I can't remember, what's the new name of Pelican Plaza? Oh, he called it that, but it's.
Macedonia Town Square.
Macedonia Town Square, okay. They don't have brick on the sides, but it's, it's a similar sign that they have. Best Buy does, but that's a massive sign. It's probably okay like this. It's more comparable to the Macedonia Town Square. Is this, is this pretty accurate? Color, printings, of, 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 of this?
Yeah.
It's like gonna match the brick.
I mean, we'll make sure it matches, yes. It all is for it to match.
In general. And whether that's.
Right.
No, and then obviously, still need, the methods work, okay? Probably can be requirements there, there's gonna be landscaping or something wrong.
We don't do that.
Yeah. Right there. Hold on. Okay. I guess, why don't you watch, for here, almost eleven feet, and then, where the regulations gotta be, at least the distance, adding back the right way.
Right.
Like, I promise, I haven't.
All right, so you have a plan. You can use this, you can use patio. I don't anticipate any more problems than showing up, getting through, getting approved.
Correct.
Providing something that shows something, okay?
Okay.
Good. Thanks for making this one, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agendas, a proposed rental rain-style home, South Park Drive. That's what. There he is.
Excuse me, go on.
Good, how are you?
Good. Good luck reading this, but, put on some dark, you read at least.
Really?
Guess what happened to me in marketing, where you're currently. For like four times the cost. But in this climate, you can scrape the ice and smell off your window.
Yeah, it has, it has. That's unbelievable.
I never would've guessed you'd order a season large. But what I tell them is great, because you can't put them on a sheet of paper, they, they're dummy, I don't know anything about marketing. And they're right.
Maybe they don't either.
Well, that, that's true.
All right, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report dated October fourteenth. The applicant's proposing a landscape plan dated September twenty nineteen fourteen in connection with the construction of a multiple-family development off of Girl Scout Way. The property's zoned R2 residential district, based on my review. I have a few comments. This is by far one of the most comprehensive landscape plans submitted to the, to the city since I've been serving as city planner. The plan provides for an excellent mixture of deciduous and non-deciduous trees and shrubs, as required by the planning zoning code. Moreover, the sensitive areas throughout the site, for example, the garbage compactor, the stormwater ponds, et cetera, have been provided particular attention and as such are well-screened. Section eleven seventy-one point one six D of the code discusses landscaping and screening for multiple-family residential uses adjoining single-family uses. My opinion, the proposed plan more than complies with this section of the code. The only suggestion I have relative to the plan is to replace the nine white pines with concolor firs. The concolor fir is a species the city arborist has utilized on other developments, most recently in the city. While the white pine is fast-growing, the concolor fir is a hardier specimen. And I have a note here, the plan does provide a cross-section for a post and rail fence, but I can't readily identify where the fence is being placed on the site. My assumption is it's either going to be located around the stormwater ponds or at the entrance to development. Around the ponds is fine, but at the entrance to development will require compliance with section eleven seventy-one point one six of the code. The location of the fence should be confirmed with the applicant. The remaining item for review on the proposed plan are the two signs. One is a temporary sign announcing construction and leasing the development, and the other is a permanent entrance sign pursuant to section eleven seventy-nine oh three F two, G, and J. Temporary project construction signs are exempt from the area requirements of the code. The permanent ground sign is regulated pursuant to tables B and C of the, of the code. Table B provides a multi-family development with thirty-two square feet of sign area, and the ground sign can exceed eight feet in height. The proposed sign is three point four two feet by six point eight three feet, or twenty-three point three five square feet, which complies with the maximum area limitations provided. The height of the sign also complies with the code. Both signs appear to be set back approximately thirty feet from the cul-de-sac, which also complies with requirements. At this time, I believe the plan can be approved, subject to a final administrative review, to ensure that the white pines are changed to concolor firs, and the location of the fence complies with the code.
Any other questions, comments? You're really building a class.
Well, thank you. We're very proud of it, as it comes out of the ground, at least. So, where is the fence? Uh, so the fence, and when I talked to the nice architect, he, he said he didn't have it on his, on his plans. It would be right here by the sign. It'll actually, the sign will be mounted between two posts with some fence. There'll be some mimicking of that, of that fence on the other side of the entranceway. We'll have to comply with. Hey, to be honest, I didn't look at eleven seventy-one point one six. We'll comply with it. You know, it's, it's part of the, kind of the signage and the theming that we do at that entrance. We'll probably do it at the other entrance as well, just to help define this is our site. So, you're talking some office? Yeah, yeah, a couple, couple sections of fence in each direction. We certainly don't want it to look like a wall off, it's not my stuff. We want it community, that's the case, not here. And then the swap for the white pine to concolor fir. In fact, I was trying to get the plan located for the night, but show.
All right, marketing people?
No, the landscape architects.
Almost. All right, any other questions, comments?
Looks good.
Yeah, looks real nice.
Go ahead, have a motion.
Have a motion, yeah, approve.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Look forward to it.
Absolutely.
See ya.
Hopefully, grand opening, uh, I think we're shooting towards February.
Okay.
Thank you.
See ya. All right, next on the agendas, a proposed exterior awning. Charming Charlie.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, Franklin.
Hi, Greg. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report dated October twelfth. The applicant's proposing to add three custom white navy striped awnings to the front of their tenant space in Macedonia Commons, which is unit eighteen. I reviewed an application dated September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, in connection with the request. From a zoning perspective, the request does not impact the overall density of the complex, nor does it alter the required number of parking spaces. It's really an architectural request in nature and should be reviewed by the city architect. I do have a minor concern about the color of the awnings. Planning commission recently approved solid orange awnings for Altitude Beauty, located near the proposed Charming Charlie tenant space. The current request is to construct navy and white striped awnings. In my opinion, color continuity is a strength of this retail development, and the current trend toward multiple-color awnings severs that continuity. This is an item I suggest be discussed with the applicant. A potential compromise is to settle on a single-color awning, perhaps navy, and incorporate this into a planned approach for the development.
All right, I believe we're good with the other comments.
Yeah, yeah, just to see.
On this one?
That is, yes.
Same, same figure was suggesting all navy.
They, they'd like to leave those stripes on it, that's their signature color, and their brand identification. That's how the stores recognize, signs are signs. And a lot, I, unfortunately, it wasn't in the office when I got the photos, but they have photos of other stores that, around the country, with the same. Sorry, that's on my phone here. I apologize. I was more prepared for them. And they've done over three hundred stores with these, these colors, and again, it's their, their signature identification.
Well, personally, I believe that helps people to find.
Yes.
All right, we still have striped awnings on State and Trade. We have, in that development, at one time, it was all the same colored lettering. There were no logos. It was all the same font. It was, it was quite innovative for its time. But I am a proponent of logos, and to me, that's a logo. However, I'm only one of forty.
I'm okay with logos too. I don't know if it's necessary for a logo, maybe I've seen some of the famous stripes. That was the one, I didn't know Charming Charlie was. Well, you, you, you won't be in there.
You won't be in there. I don't think you'll be in there.
Once you find it, guess you're gonna get it.
Right, easy, easy. But you have some really nice stuff in there, and I can see where, where, you know, when you look from Masco and Tom's Boulevard back towards the shopping center, to me, it always was a matter of safety, if you could have the logo that would catch people's eyes, so they wouldn't be looking like this, where is it? And, and, right, and so, however, that's just me. I mean, the, everybody who recommends in this particular case is asking you for solid color, but.
I don't see the thing on the website that was like, you know, I don't want these colors or any of this, this pattern or anything. I saw the logo was clearly plastered all over the website. I'm just not crazy about the stripes. I wasn't crazy about putting any awnings on the front of that thing. You know, it doesn't matter, it goes with the architecture of the building. The colors are the ones that are up there, or at least, they're solid. They kinda go with the brick. Blue would be crazy about, but it'd be better with that than the stripes. I don't wanna get us in any trouble with logos, corporate, whatever, this and that. But I really, you know, unless we really feel strongly, this is their identification, which I, I really think is the logo, I, I'd really like to see a solid color.
What color is that logo, that, that sign? It's red.
I'm just looking at the window, this place that they're showing here looks like this.
Well, we have their sign, now apart from the package.
White cases.
So, it's white lettering?
On the, on the L E, on the.
The big one?
The script and block style, yeah. And then there's a gold.
Small ones on the windows.
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess.
I kinda agree with you. I don't, I would rather see the solid color, for the same reason, you have to make it a little more, more longer.
Do we have any awnings along yet?
Only one, like, split.
Only.
Also, we've got, there's a warm magician, British arms there, these, these.
Well, it kinda sounds like we're talking about a solid color.
Yes, sir.
So, you're gonna have to make that choice, to be.
Well, my customers, there's all I am to be willing to do that. They'd have to check with Charming Charlies and see, you know, how they'd go with that, but they would be willing to change those to solid blue, get their approved by corporate, Charming, Charming Charlie.
That's Charlie.
So, a little something.
It's more true. Don't worry about it. He's charming.
I guess, the new, the new motion, if they don't prove that, I guess, you know, come back. Look at it again.
Well, if they do approve that, can we move forward?
Oh, yeah. Make, prove, you know. I make a question.
You can, well, sure, right.
With, I'm assuming the, the, the solid color navy that they're calling out there. Yeah, make a solid navy, and then approve it with that.
Sir, have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, good luck. Hope it works out.
Yeah.
If, if they do approve that, and we make the newcomers, can we, we get the permit, we, can we install before the permit's in our hand, or do we have to have it in our hands?
You have to have the permit first.
And this one, what follow-up question? How long does usually take to get a permit?
Once it's approved through here?
Yes.
You do it next time.
Okay, so, if it's, so it's been approved, it's just a matter of them deciding.
As long as they're okay with it.
Solid blue, you could do it in due date.
So, sorry.
Put in a permit, wanting to get it, nothing to do.
So, if they approve, I can email someone and say, yes, it's approved, and allow the permit a day or so? Is that the case?
Come in with the money and the permit that you have.
We, we actually submitted, checked with the, with the application.
That was the plan, with this permit for building and for some.
Okay, I will let you know. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a nice evening. Uh, next, we have the preliminary plan for GetGo. Biggest walk for daily GetGo ever.
More lejible site plan that, I'm not sure, maybe I'm gonna need the aerial background was a little bit.
It's nice to have that, so you can see.
More, I thought this was more lines, so. So, you have one of that asset.
Now, we got hold, so we got, yes, hold. All right, comments, Brian?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated October fourteenth. The applicant is proposing to construct a six thousand one hundred and twenty-five square foot GetGo gasoline station at the corner of Highland and Route Eight. The current submittal is for preliminary approval, subject to section eleven thirty-seven oh five of planning zoning code. I reviewed a conceptual plan. I, I guess I draw a distinction between a preliminary plan and a conceptual plan, because the plan was fairly conceptual in nature. So, I've reviewed a conceptual plan, shown on an aerial photograph dated September twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen, based on that review. I have a few comments, and again, the comments are very fifty thousand foot level down. The subject site contains existing buildings that presumably will be demolished as part of this project. The subject site contains existing buildings that presumably will be demolished as part of this project. There's a Days Inn and a, a restaurant. The subject site's Zone B four Highway Business District and gasoline stations and car wash facilities are permitted uses. Outdoor displays are conditionally permitted in the B four district. Proposal includes an outdoor dining area because the new facility will contain a quick service restaurant, which is permissible. In my opinion, the outdoor dining area is permissible under the restaurant use classification and therefore does not require a conditional zoning certificate. However, if the applicant intends to have outdoor display and merchandise, then conditional approval is needed and does require a public hearing pursuant to Section eleven thirty-seven oh five. Or actually eleven thirty-seven oh six of the code. This should be confirmed with the applicant and shown on future plan submittals. My third comment, twenty-five off-street parking spaces are required based on one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet of floor area. And I give a calculation, six thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet divided by two fifty equals twenty-five spaces. The one to two hundred and fifty square feet is utilized versus one to two hundred square feet, as identified by the applicant, because the development appears to have slightly more than a hundred feet of building frontage. And I note Section eleven seventy-one point one-one C is a section for the, the reduction in the area for parking. Even if development has less than a hundred feet and one space for every two hundred square feet is utilized, thirty-one spaces are needed in the conceptual plan to pick, depict sixty-five spaces. I have a note here that the plan does state five oversized parking stalls are provided, but I don't readily see them on the plan. There's a note on the western side of the lot stating large truck parking, but I don't know if this is where the oversized spaces are located. This should be confirmed by the applicant. Item four, the western building elevation depicts propane storage. This location and method to secure these materials should be approved by the fire department. Item five, the building renderings illustrate rooftop mechanical equipment. These materials should be located on the ground if possible and screened from view with fencing and or landscaping. Item six, a note on the plan suggests there may be future diesel pumps on the site. These should be identified and planned for now rather than in the future. Seven, future submittals must, must include complete details regarding landscaping, lighting, stormwater detention, and all of applicable city requirements. And eight, all the applicable building setbacks and other general area standards appear to be met. However, the conceptual plan's not drawn to a scale. As it looks like it was reduced to fit on the smaller paper. For future submittals, the plans should be on a standard twenty-four by thirty-six inch paper and to an appropriate scale. The plans are very conceptual at this point, but do provide enough information for the planning commission to make an informed decision. Provide the applicant accounts for the items noted, noted in this review and provides full scale, full size scale plans in the future. I believe the conceptual approval can be issued at this time.
Thank you. I think there were some other comments on this.
Yes, there's some from Nick.
Right. From our engineer. Could you read those, please?
A full engineering skill will be required in accordance with eleven thirty-seven oh five. Stormwater management design shall be in accordance with the following. Nine twenty-three erosion and sediment control and post-construction stormwater quality. Nine twenty-four repairing setbacks. Summit County Engineers Stormwater Management Manual, the latest edition. A post-construction stormwater L T M A will be required for this development. L T M A shall be recorded prior to completion of this project. A special flood hazard requirement will be required in accordance with thirteen fifty-three flood damage reduction. External approvals from the following entities will be required. Cleveland Water Department, Summit D O E S, Summit S W C D O E P A.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments?
I have two comments that the project will have to meet all codes and as I stated earlier, any outdoor seating required pressure protections required by the two thousand eleven Ohio Department.
Looks like there's a little wall there.
Yes, sir, there's a missionary knee wall.
So it still have to be engineered data to submit that it will.
It's against protective foundations.
It'll need to submit along a plan review for that.
While we're on that, I would continue falls along the other side only because of what happened. So I have something to write right in.
So we have that, we're on. So those depicted on the site plan will bring the entrance.
Oh, I see, because it's the desk and pulling in the star icing. Also, one of the things is just making a comment. We, we have to wrestle with this in Western Reserve, but you changed a lot of it to brick, uh, brick around the canopy. Very kind of failing. When I go there and I can look around, there's nothing that's Western Reserve around. You got Bob, you got BP, you got Speedway. So, I think you're making an effort and I appreciate it. Any other?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this project, it falls within the town center standards for architectural design and has some additional design standards. One of those is rows of red brick, which they've incorporated on part of the building. And there are some other design details that are mentioned in the code. Cornices, which it looks like they have, but there's not enough detail to really see what's there above the, the sign band around the building. And also mentions the possibility of decorative lintels over the doors and windows. I don't know if you can do a soldier course on the brick above the, above the windows to give a little bit of difference there. And I think the applicant should identify all the materials on these elevations so the planning commission's sure what the final product is going to be.
We can provide some black and white elevations with some material callouts that I've asked for pre-application. This, this elevation, we're taking a dramatic step. Yeah, we should take over brand identity and kind of produce a very diverse, dynamic, contemporary look. One of the products that we're working on using is a Nichiha panel, fiber cement panel that is brick, also metal. Something that's becoming more and more prevalent in the marketplace now with retailers, restaurants. Hilton is using it on their hotels as well. As the appearance of brick, I showed you a case study of that effect where we're supplying. And I think that limits the ability to do some soldier forcing with that type of product. But we've, we've tried to define that again, defining, breaking up this building into the base, the body and the ground with detailing in the product. We use with polished block on the bottom, ground face, see in view. With some other detailing above that and this fiber cement panels. And with metal corners, which again, we just provide some more details.
Yeah, it just wasn't out there to tell, yeah.
So we've, we've tried to trick, take a pretty significant step since that preliminary meeting.
Yes, I, I see that. While trying to retain your identity.
I kind of understand that, but if you are in a replacement scenario, you're going to just say it's Western Reserve is required. And that's not, you're just like you said, it's your, your contemporary look. Yeah, I think it really is more like your Solon, you know, brand new on Solon or the cock balls. That I think if either one of those, you could drop right into the spot and there's going to be our, our architectural requirements.
And understanding those concerns and, and again, with the, the push going forward, thinking it goes, it's what we've done in the past is we're really not.
This one just opened, just opened this within the last five.
This, this part of that has been in production and review for a year and a half or more. Wasn't available to implement.
They wouldn't have accepted neither of those. Neither of those. And Solon has, or Western Reserve requirements in this sense, but they, you guys spent months going over the bottlers. They lost their way out of the bottler. Personally, I can't accept the architectural, the, the look of this building, not this, I mean, it's, it's, it's Western Reserve partner in the town center. As strange as it might seem, this corner is part of that. It is a big giant, first, you know, blowing up the whole area, which, you know, is, is great, we're going to have something new. But it really shouldn't be three apartments. If you were just rehabbing like the, the original, you have the get-go that's there now is using an existing service station. You know, got away with just kind of coming in and changing some signs out. This is a whole redo and area that requires the Western Reserve. And knowing that you've done it within the last year in two places locally, and I got, I got pictures up here for you to see.
Would like the commission to consider, again, existing facilities that are out there. We're developing that property that could take place as part of this. Something non-traditional. Site planning layouts that we're trying to minimize and improve the curb appeal of this facility. Looking at the weight from the direction. As about the intersection, putting some more decorative elements physically from that intersection. And against the side appearance as well. This mayor, we had, we discussed this originally. Mentioned that, I mean, although we have made some, some compromise with the architectural limitations. This is a, this is a look that we want our customers to identify and associate. A lot of different types of facilities out there. We're ranging from the old service station that we had on high amount kiosk to some of the larger facilities. And this being larger than any of the other facilities that, that you mentioned and any facilities that we've done in the past as well. And really just taking that, that being a very dynamic approach. To that, should, should this build.
Yeah, these other ones probably don't have a restaurant and many other things. It's just for debate, what creates problem is the zoning. This is that B four, is that what it is, Dennis? Highway?
That's correct.
It's the only place in town that's owned like that. So that's why it was never intended for much to be there other than related businesses to highway travel. How the heck it got put in the Western Reserve somehow.
That's something that we've pretty much made every other business come in and appear to. Fairness to them would be to come back and now and say, no, we're not going to do that. I agree with Kevin. I think that some things like this could be done to make it fit in with the rest of the business.
I think what you guys are doing there is great. The layout is fantastic compared to what it is now. It's a complete nightmare for me to go in there to try to get gas. But I think I agree with everybody up here. We can help these standards to the other businesses that have moved in here and have built here and I think we absolutely have to stick our hands on that.
So what, what specifically, I'm aware of codes, some of the non-traditional developments that can be made to try, but what specific element of this building is, is not.
Oh, the contemporary look, I guess, I mean, that's. I think Dennis, I, I remember Dennis spent a couple of days redrawing this and giving you.
A little sketch, thank you.
A sketch that would actually be acceptable in the Western Reserve. I don't know what happened with that.
That's, you know, again, that's a, that's a, that's a major consideration that may be an ideal breaker for this potential project with changing the architecture, changing the, especially the entry element portion, we have the eyebrow design, just part of the recognition. This is a, you know, we have all time money dollars for investment in this city. One that we want to openly introduce, so we get to a concept and have that something that is a level of distinction for, for the city. Having one of the first. Changing even the color of the brick from the shale brown to the red, where it is, it's pretty significant. For the introduction of this building. That's, that's something that's difficult.
I know, and it's probably different altitude, we covered the halls and it's probably different altitude in Solon. What you guys did, you met the architectural standards of both of those, those new developments are here. Both of those are part of them. There is a pretty strict architectural requirements. Drip past both of those, then nobody seems to confuse them with anything else. And I guess they have brain recognition, but they seem to be doing a good business.
Can we agree on something, kind of, it seems like the, some of the comments on the site plan itself. And I've heard a lot from the commission about site plan, but maybe that building elevations or something. Have a, I guess, mental level of satisfaction. In this preliminary site plan, is there ability to do a reapproval on the site plan, the condition upon coming back for a final site plan approval? Making some modifications for the elevations or?
Dennis, what are your thoughts on that building? Can that building be emphasized or questioned or served?
I think it could be, yeah.
Okay. So, so would have the elements to.
Yeah, he spent, I think he spent a couple of days redrawing it.
And did some sketching, yeah.
And did some sketching, we, well, we thought it was minor changes to it, especially with the, with the get-go and the way that it's designed across the top.
And what I would like to, and Dennis was very helpful and provided us confidence. Just having an opportunity to have my architect meeting with Dennis sometime during now.
Well, we have it listed as a proposed preliminary plan. So giving it approval as a proposed preliminary plan, further review between the architects to push the Western Reserve book, would the commission be satisfied about that?
I would be fine with that.
Okay, just one more clarification of the engineering of the comments. I'm sure she had those comments, the fire bureau had those, she had that. Just as a point of clarification, Brian, some of your comments. We'll be pursuing additional use of the outdoor storage that is part of the proposal. That's located on the west side of the building. Kind of as visible.
Right, right.
Have some type of outdoor storage here that this is illustrating in there to be something for more auto-related merchandise. That needs to be finalized, that will be finalized, it's on, it's a middle condition use. Having the details of that. In the, in the comments, I wanted to, to see clarity on. We will, we are proposing rooftop, the penal units do have a screening for that. Again, for the operation of the building, for, I think for the aesthetics of the building, as opposed to having something on the, on the, on the ground floor and have to do that work on the exterior of the building. Things best from house on top of it. That way, it's more efficient, more effective. And then we would have some type of advisor screen, refinish and all screen to screen those units review. So from the different respective renderings that you have, to illustrate the location of those units. Again, this is. Again, this is preliminary type of elevation. We'll have something that identifies the material type and whatnot. That is not a chain link fence that is typical what's been used, advisor brand screen that encapsulates that screen's computer.
Yeah, the screening is, is effective, but that would be a good place to start with something that's more Western Reserve. And if you could start there with color.
Something that would complement the building's lighting design.
And again, that's where you would want to work with Dennis as to, you know, where you can massage it so that we can perhaps reach that point of compromise.
Yeah, because we're talking, we do have to be somewhat conservative of the hotel across the street, you know, that, 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 the unit to that too. So that was one of the other reasons we're, you know, looking at ground level. So I'm sure you could probably incorporate something, like that is, like the mayor's spot chairman, something like that.
Have you taken a slightly different approach with the fuel can be as well?
Well, the fuel can be as footstark, because that's one of the most physical things. Like in the soul, and you have the brick going all the way to the roof.
How wide is that? Where is that? It's about twenty-five, one point five.
Yeah, twenty-five.
I guess what we have screened way up there, this be upgraded.
We, we did that both ways, conceptually, and trying to lighten the mass of the structure by only having the brick work up six feet or so, as opposed to having the vaults looking all the way up to the string. Makes it wider area and more focused on the building as opposed to fuel can. Commission, consider something as proposed, as, as an operative, the pole brick?
I might not push for the pole brick twice as much if it's a wall down the building. If it's more on the building, I'm gonna be able, you know, maybe center over there and try and do something more than just stick the poles up. So that's the speed we wanted, the same thing, just sticking the poles up and we wanted the motion air can at the top. And we had to change.
We see the canopy there, even adds a shape to it.
No, I have, I have a, so, manager, if that's something to be considered, then I would ask the commission, would be open to, again, having a conversation with my architect and the city government, hopefully meet in the middle somewhere.
It's a great part, I mean, I guess it's all of it to fall off like the overall picture that you're bringing back to us as far as what it changes. And that would be, you know.
Okay, Brian, let's, after sort of tech, include the ice and the propane and get in the red box, does this fall into outdoor storage as well?
I think she probably included it all as part of the application and where it's gonna be located on the, on the site.
I guess with, with at least, at least this, and also, I don't know if we can even give any kind of approval before we have a public hearing, even if it's such a, I don't know.
A public hearing?
That's what they were saying, because of the outdoors air conditioning, because of outdoor storage.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something we'll submit an application for that, that's something that can be combined with final sound. That's a third point, commission.
I mean, yeah, but I can give up, questions, can you give a conceptual approval even though it requires a public hearing, or do you have to have a public hearing for your conceptual approval?
I think you're, I think it's okay if the planning commission issues a preliminary plan approval under eleven thirty-seven oh five F, which states that the applicant may meet informally with the planning commission to review preliminary plans prior to preparing final plans subsequent, or pursuant to subsection C hereof. So those, the, you're really looking at the preliminary sort of conceptual layout of the site right now. The, actually, the architectural renderings and such all come for the final approval under the code. And I think that the commission, in my opinion, the commission's made it very clear, they want changes to the architectural style and asking the city architect to work with the applicant, both on the building and on the, on the canopy and the look and feel of it. But I think the preliminary plan sets the conceptual layout of the site, and I think that is something the commission could look at this evening if they were comfortable doing so.
I guess you, you just can't get the final, so we have that public hearing. Right. I guess so, question, so this is like future, where you want to put some, some truck fuel lines and diesel pumps in the back, you come through and head stop to a nice truck, a different truck, that's somebody.
Correct, that would be more larger trucks, that's certainly, most likely, very much important, because sometimes you create a lot of traffic congestion with the normal customer usage, box trucks and other large trucks, high speeds, essentially, essentially employed, as we're proposing. We don't have the details of what that may be yet, but if the use could be improved, then essentially come back in the future for a final approval with the actual design document of what an elevation would look like as far as the engine could be. And similar with, with the car wash, the layout is something that could be, it's pretty, but building elevation things of that nature, we consider in the future for separate.
So basically, what we're looking at now is the way they all make it fit. And then actually, the way they're doing it is good because you're leaving room for different elements.
Okay. In this, it may be that, that the high speed diesel is something that we don't really use for standard, in that case, we would need a engine pumpers in the back area, the most logical system that we can come up with, the car washes.
Yeah, that's right.
Car washes, I'm still, a lot of those, I've seen some car washes that are different operations. That's something that we can actually-
Mr. Robert High School, these, these don't have, actually, some, but throughway traffic like along ninety or long eighty.
The code states that the attendant has to have full view of all points from her seatbelt.
So, are you, is it, do you have any? Yeah, there will be visibility. There are two separate entryways, one in the front, one on the side, that'll be vision glass, we need a customer service team that will, you know, this big way to see those pumps, the starter gate configuration. Generally do, what we have done, we have different type of alternative vehicles, compressed nitrogen gas, other plates of that sort, it's a fleet guard type of usage where there's surveillance cameras there, but it's essentially a, a self-serve type of thing, transaction is at the pump, there's no interface, it's just, you know.
Is that self-serve when the station is closed?
It, this is deep for us, it's a twenty-four hour operation. But that's what we have done in the past, with similar type of operations, although we've not done it in recent years. We have a fleet guard structure, there's going to be like a demo video as to how to fuel. But anybody that gets a fleet guard has to be certified, has to be registered, that's proper safety measures for.
So I mean, if it's self-serve after hours, it has to have a full sub, requires a suppression system on the pump.
Yeah, it sure does, and these extinguishers, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Right now, we're, we're just saying it's gonna be in a separate area.
We're not on that level.
Yes. So where we stand is a preliminary approval, approval for a preliminary plan with architectural, you know, conversations between our architect and theirs. Are we good with that?
The only other comment I have is we should consider restricting left turns out of this driveway. First, I was thinking of right in, right out, only here, but I think left in, probably not. But left out, as close as we are, this traffic backs up, this turn on chip, inch and a lot of it, there's a lot of queues when this thing is busy, but sending all that left turn traffic out this way, I think would be a lot of trouble.
That, that may be an issue, majority of the turns out of here, we'll, but having concentration of all those turns at that location backing up in the facility may cause more potential problems. We have to do a trip generation study, but-
I think you wouldn't even do that if that sees some next purpose.
This is something to consider, I understand that necessarily.
Yes, I think it's gonna be a safety, safety issue, and yes, people aren't gonna want to come out with an angry life here. You're gonna, you're gonna, you know, the way the thing flows right now, even if you're, you pull in over here and face this direction, I think most people are trying to get out over here. But for the few that, that are gonna try and make this, it's, it's, it's a, it's a rough move. This time of night, maybe it's not bad, but five o'clock.
They're rushing.
That's, that's one region over here, is because there is so much traffic. But because of that, and this traffic means that aren't close, you probably can't push it any farther because then you're, you're not, you're not your flow of the site, I mean, some kind of port chap type of thing that would keep them.
Would, would the city consider were to, if, if that was a restriction, would that have another additional curb cut, help if we need further away from the intersection, essentially somewhere to balance that more? You know, that, that, again, that's primarily for the trucks. That's, that's the car wash.
Future car wash here, just like, well, first phase blend here, the car wash coming out doing this.
Let us take that into consideration, understand that that-
Yeah, the further away from this corner, the better. And what he's saying is a restriction. And I, I think-
Left in, okay, left out. I just think that would help the safety, this is gonna be, it's gonna become a lot busier places, it's gonna be a double draw.
Oh, yeah, people go out of their way to be there, so it's gonna be busy.
Let's take that into consideration.
Sure. All right, so conditional use for this preliminary plan review approval is to be looking at architectural styling and working with them, and restriction of the left turn out of the east driveway.
So, so, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, thank you for listening, appreciate it. All right, next is proposed engineering inspection for GFS. Hope you get any more, which you want to, we'll see. How are you?
How are you?
How are you, Derek Ford?
Very good.
I wanna know, guys, we're the same marketing person.
Oh, yeah, geez, yeah, but at least yours is flat.
The first round, I guarantee you looked just like yours.
Is that right?
I can't, I didn't check my head, it's like a-
Okay. So you're, yeah, all right, man, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my report October thirteenth. The applicant's proposing a revised landscape plan dated October third, two thousand fourteen, in connection with the construction of a new Gordon Food Services building in the Alexandria Square retail development. It's my understanding this landscaping plan is back for review because the east building elevation has exposed foundation. In section eleven seventy-two point oh two of the planning zoning code prohibits exposed concrete block, concrete or block. Additionally, the applicant seeking approval of a decorative forty-two inch tall fence along the rounding two frontage. Based on my review of the request, I have a few comments. To screen the exposed foundation wall, the applicant's proposing five honey locust trees and five beds of juniper bushes. The trees and junipers are acceptable, but I don't believe should be the only landscape species used to screen the wall. I recommend four concolor firs be added between the landscape beds to provide additional screening. I also recommend eliminating some of the juniper bushes and mixing in burning bushes and viburnum to landscape beds to add color and taller screen. Adding the concolor firs will also help provide an appropriate balance between deciduous and non-deciduous trees in the overall landscape design. The addition of non-deciduous trees is a repeat comment in my two thousand thirteen review of the landscaping for this site. Pursuant to section eleven seventy-one point one six F and G, I believe the proposed forty-two inch tall white picket fence is acceptable and will be constructed of maintenance-free materials required by the code. If the applicant agrees to the additional concolor firs and alteration of landscape beds to include viburnum and burning bushes, then I believe the plan can be approved subject to a final administrative review for compliance.
Question, is that either smaller version, but it doesn't include the hull, or that rock here today? Politics not, heaven hath.
Mayor, if I may, just a couple comments.
All right, Mike?
So this was a result as our final engineering inspection on the site, we noticed the exposed walls, which we were talking about, that this being a problem, the problem with the superintendent. He stressed that this was a problem in other areas, that it was a design flaw, and that some of the other areas they built, they had the same issue. I suggested when the landscaper was out there that the exposed walls can be easily remedied by landscaping and retaining walls and adding the soil up to the brick area, and then just making, you know, maybe two-foot landscape walls with, come back here with some, some ideas of that. I'm not so sure that just the landscaping alone is gonna be acceptable, when you make everybody else do the actual work to grade. It's quite a, quite a difference between landscape and brick.
So you're suggesting fill to the brick and landscape?
Yes.
Is that possible?
It's, what else sides are we dealing with here? Well, you deal with three sides, you're dealing with both sides and the rear, not this issue.
Okay, so not, not the eighty-two side?
No.
Okay, side of the road.
But you have, don't forget you got a road, a tractor supply, so you see it all the way around.
Yeah, it is unique, neat site, and it has three sides to it. I know when, but we have some similar challenges that get go did back last fall. We did fall, right, people came in with kind of our prototype, modified it a little bit. I did print off just for reference purposes, and this is what was presented back then. In some respects, it's no concern of the commission's, but it's a small site, it has nine feet of grade change across the site. What we did with this building is, is have the lower side with a truck docked, it's, that's our low side, trying to make up the difference, I mean, that original wall, so. I think what, we spent so much time focusing on the front here in the Western Reserve, I think maybe it got a little bit lost. These were the elevations that presented before, so again, maybe not that it changed anything, but this wasn't something that happened during construction or midstream during design, it's just kind of been this way the whole time. I, I think it's just the focus of that front, maybe pulled everyone's attention away from back here. Two of these areas are ADA required sidewalk ramps, so if you're switching back, I'm not sure if there's a whole lot of options there. Two of these areas are ADA-required sidewalk ramps, so if you're switching back, I'm not sure there's a whole lot of options there. That's kind of why we went with the landscaping instead of trying to directly add the building wall, come off a little bit. Why not add, add some additional landscaping, get you a little larger planting that you can pull away from the wall. So that was kind of the thought process on, on where we're coming from. Mike, you and I talked a couple of times. I apologize. We had certainly hindsight, which our contractor maybe communicated with us a little bit better at the time.
So is the fence going across the front, across the eighty-two side? Yeah, that, that was an issue and I could address that because as we're looking at the sidewalk, there's quite a drop-off. And we just, it's safer to put some there instead of some.
Yeah, the wall's about eight feet off the sidewalk, so it's right in that gray area where on one side you can look at and say it's not really a true pedestrian area. On the flip side, all it takes is one person to go sideways on a bike or something, and that's something that, um, we don't have any issue with. The only thing I'd clarify from Brian's comment is we're looking at a black, a little bit like you could see elsewhere, so. Yeah, we, we fully intend to put that in pending the planning commission's approval. You know, I, I know, I know certain commissioners, I'm not sure which of you looked at ourselves, you could store, we had a similar scenario. We came back and painted the exposed foundation wall, and I don't think that's the right solution either. I think you really draw attention to it. So the thought here is really this kind of, it's already constructed. Anything trying to add onto that constructed buildings is not going to wear and do well for times. The thought here is trying to soften what's already been constructed.
There's certain areas you can't cover on this bottom, back elevation, south elevation, front.
South elevation, you have a switchback with your.
Right, so the, on the end of the road to the right, that's just going to be there.
This, that's.
Exposure.
Yeah. Um. This.
That's not bad.
But.
That's not bad.
We can put something up top.
Yeah, this one, I mean, I think the quickest fix is when you've got about two foot of exposed concrete is just to build up your, your landscape bounce.
Really, that's the quickest. Rather than covering with, uh.
Right, because you're not going to see if you're having landscaping.
You can build your landscape beds up. Do you probably have the room to build a two-foot landscape bed with your?
With some fill.
With some fill and mulch it and put your, you know, mix in your, your different landscape plantings and it, it should be pretty.
Yeah, we could certainly do a combination. We're going to, we're going to be cutting in the sod that was recently placed, so we've already kind of trashed that unfortunately, so. Yeah, we could add some, some topsoil, bring that sod level up and have those plantings as we show.
Well, if that's not a problem, then that would be a conditional part of the approval.
Yeah, I, I can say they're not comfortable with adding the block, maybe all those things over time. I can pre-stroke my hunting just now. Long blocks and long, short.
So the kind of steps.
Yeah, so we would put the fill in and put the landscape. Basically, slope up from our property last year, his property, I would roughly ten feet, if my memory is there to be right, slope up a couple feet and add plantings. Everybody all right?
Motion?
And then real quick, the, the, the fur, the, the plant selection, you know, we're, we're fine with that. Now, your arbiters must have a deal on those furries.
He likes.
He just eat grow in his yard.
Get two, two for one special.
I would ask you that, that with that, the filling of that, just to provide me with the drawings so that we can.
Oh, the fill too, just so we can show them different contours.
And show a cross-section of how you're going to, how you're going to achieve it and how.
Yeah, we have time to, I'm going to want one on four, so, so we'll bring it up eighteen inches.
All right. So we have a, a proposal that is conditional that you follow recommendations as far as landscaping and mount it up to.
Okay, just for my clarification, you're going with the black, that is rather than a white.
Yeah, and our plans do show a black one, so everything holds true, but that's better than a white.
All right. So we have that conditional.
It might be.
We have.
Sorry.
All the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? All right.
Mike, obviously, we're open. We have an open, we're operating our CCO. Is this it? Does this need formally go to the council?
I'll extend the, no, that's the council. I'll extend the, uh, engineering. Yeah, I can see for some.
It's hard to be getting a plan. End of this, end of this week, we have to hire somebody. People are busy right now.
But then again, you want to get the landscape in probably in the.
There you go, be our goal, but we'll work with you.
Thanks, John.
Great, appreciate it.
And thanks for putting a black on the car.
Oh, we tried. Second time in a row.
All right. The post signage for Charming Charlie. You poor gal, you bad to sit there all this time. Wish we could take it up too, but that's not. Well, yeah, we can. All right. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one final report for you this evening, dated October twelfth. The applicant's requesting a new two and a half by sixteen point five eight or forty-one point four six square foot wall sign on their tenant space in the Mastoni Commons, unit eighteen, previously Radioshack. The frontage for unit eighteen is thirty feet, which provides a space with up to sixty square feet of sign area. Proposed sign will contain script and block style lettering that will have white faces with side returns painted bronze. Reviewed the request for compliance with the approved signs criteria for the commons and find the post sign substantially complies with the requirements with a few minor exceptions. First, the script style lettering is now permissible, but requires planning commission's approval. And this is under our recent changes to the Mastoni Commons sign, um, sign plan. And then second, the signs shall project twelve inches from the face of the building. And three, the ways, the raceway color must match the fascia. Please note, the proposed window signage complies with the area requirements outlined in section eleven seventy-nine point oh seven F four, but the proposed color, gold, should be confirmed by the planning commission as being acceptable pursuant to the recent amendments to the commons signage package. At this time, I believe the proposal can be approved subject to the planning commission acceptance of, one, the script style lettering, provided the logo is, the logo is trademarked. Two, the gold is an approved color for the window lettering. Also, the commission should confirm that the raceway color will match the fascia and the sign will project twelve inches from the face of the building. The commission and applicant reached agreement on these issues and believe it's reasonable to approve the, the proposal subject to a final administrative confirmation of the items on a revised illustration.
Thank you, T R I.
I took one of the questions, a short one is, I'm not certain much whether you're going to use either of them. If you have the final, I can confirm it real quickly on page four seven. Sorry.
It's all right.
We did revise this proposal, um, the, first that it was just as a front of the.
Yeah, that's what we had.
Does it seem like base legs? Yep. Okay, so. You run rings for it. Basically, the reason for the change, and I think Brian had the robots drawings, maybe not everyone was in. We have one requires base split channel wires, standard, and the customer wanted halo. So you had halo to look at. So these are correct. Halo wires don't have return to faces. Everything else of this is the same size.
So basically, you heard the requirement.
Yeah.
Yes, Brian?
Is the sign, is the sign project twelve inches from the face of the building?
Ten inches. That was a question that I had. Trademarked? Yes. Script, Charming Charlie, that is trademarked. So is the gold, is their corporate color, those two items. The next was, I had a question, which is typically codes read that it's twelve inches or less due to.
Ours requires, um, a set, a seven inch projection and five inch letter, so a total of twelve.
Tell me if that's a question.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Right.
I'm okay with the gold.
Are you guys ready with the gold?
Okay. Just, are they just.
Vinyl, yes, on the inside. A lot of places do that now, three point one, Carter, Music Kids, across the front, and as you're walking down. You just see.
I'm okay with it. You have the brands.
Yeah.
If you, yeah, approval with the twelve inch projection.
All right. That's the motion. Do I have a second? Motion second. All in favor? Aye. Both? See that? It was short the way. Nothing worse than to go all that time and say no.
Have a good night.
All right, good night.
You've never, you've never done that. It's all handled through the building. But they have some. They have.
Ten days of time or something like that.
And it has to go ten days prior, so there's publication requirements.
No. Horse, oh, there horses.
All right. Um, do we have any other business or do I have motion to adjourn? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. More papers, more pictures left.